All right, let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord, and this body, and all of our citizens, Lord, please with Jimmy Hayes and his family, they're going through this difficult time, Lord, just help them and bless them, Lord, and heal them. Lord, just forgive for our sins, we're with you, always ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's go to the allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Mayor Biden to the floor. June 4th, 2019, Winfield City Council meeting. Short agenda looks like, there's a lot of stuff filled in that short agenda. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the May 21st, 2019 meeting. Anybody's got questions, turn us on the way with minutes of written, if not, any actual motion for approval. Tim Segal, Mr. Allen Fader. All right, let me see right here, before we go to the next item on the agenda, I've got, uh... Jennifer Johnson, she'll represent the SASE, not Solutions, I'm gonna give her just a minute to speak on behalf of the city map that she's doing for the city of Winfield, so she's putting government out of all the streets and stuff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just gonna take a minute to let you all know who I am and what we're doing. I'm here from Matt Solutions of Orange, Mississippi. We are working to update the Winfield City Map Project, working with Gina and the Parks and Recreation as their fundraiser. And what we're gonna do is we go around to different businesses and organizations in your area, seek in sponsorship to promote this map so that it can be given out free to anybody who is a guest, or just those who are looking to find out information about Winfield. One thing that we are gonna do differently is once this publication is completed, we're gonna give a digital file to your City Hall office so that it can be uploaded on your website. So any, any sponsor who has a website, we're gonna embed a link. So if somebody's looking on, on the map, for a bank, or for any business that is needed here, we are gonna embed a link so they can go directly to that website. So we do have a few spots left on the inside of the map for any business that wants to be a part of that. Um, our ad space is started at 385 and it's good for about two to three years. So if you do the math, it's not very much in advertising. And so we're happy to come around and see y'all tomorrow, or get with Gina, and we can do it later this week.
I appreciate that. Does anybody got any question for? I'm sure we'll be seeing around town.
Okay, they've had great response on it, so I do appreciate the sense of community that I feel here. Had a really good time here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is from the field to the final product. We've, uh, we've got Mr. Greg Lowery here from Fayette, and Mr. Glenn Crawford here from Vernon. I'm gonna let, uh, Greg go in a little bit, jump into detail here wide open, kinda feel like that's why we've got a lot of crowd here, a lot of people didn't really know I had more to call and ask for what that meant, and I said, "Just might as well show up and see what it is."
Good, good, good. Greg, Greg over there. Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. All of the council, thank you for this time. I'm Greg Lowery from Fayette, Alabama. Been here 52 years, born in Fayette, Alabama. My dad's a pastor, been pastor for 45 years in the same community. My mom's a schoolteacher, she's retired. And tonight, I'm bringing to you a program that we've been working on, and we're so excited to bring this, and we, we really appreciate the President for making two opportunities available to make this happen to us. If you'll flip to the next screen, I represent Bama Biotech Corporation, and our group of investors, and our economic team, and model have put together an opportunity that we believe that'll put all of our farmers back to work and take advantage of this program. Let's go to the next program and just look at it real quick. Our model here is, is an, is an opportunity model that takes advantage of the commercial hemp section in the farm bill. And that was previously not available to us, and we'll be able to grow this farm, put our farmers to work, grow this hemp, put our farmers to work, use this product to, process it, and hopefully make a product out of it and distribute it around the world. This model also takes advantage of the investment benefits in the opportunity zones, and we're trying to place every factory that we can inside those opportunity zones. Go to the next screen.
Okay.
Now, I have to hit the word next up there. Here, uh-oh, go back one.
I don't know why I did that.
That's all right, that's all right. Basically, uh, what this model does, it looks like we need to probably invest in technology too, to sort of get some of this. But that's all right. We've been working together while she's getting that together. We've been working with Mayor Price at the ground level of this, Mayor Crawford, Mayor Nelson, Mayor Madison, down in Fayette. Our chamber director, Danny White, is here, he's responsible for getting commercial business into, go to the next screen, into, uh, into our area. And what we're designing this thing to do is to be a tri-county thing, with, working together with our C3 PAC, David Thornell and his team, and it all starts with the farmers right here. This model is gonna help save our family farms. In the beginning, agriculture and industry is the fundamental foundation that's made America great, and we're going back to our fundamentals right here. But first, let me, let me clarify this, just so you won't be confused. The hemp, the commercial hemp plant is not the marijuana plant. You guys wanna sit out there in the parking lot and smoke hemp all night, about all you're gonna get's a cough and a headache. But what we're doing is extracting the nutrients from these, from this plant for medical research and for fiber extraction for automobile industries and other things for 3D printing. This model will also educate the farmers on how to grow this commercial hemp. It'll also have seminars to where we're training how to retrofit the farmer's existing equipment to make it useful, and also they have brand-new equipment that'll harvest the equipment, but that's, that's pretty expensive, and we'll have those companies come, and hopefully we'll do that at the Auburn Experiment Station. We're working very closely with Auburn University and Tuskegee University for the research on this project. Go to the next screen. Now, in our model, we're setting up two different types of factories. The first factories will be the oil extraction factories. The oil is extracted from the plant, it is tested, we have scientists and laboratories to set up that meet quality control, to meet our USDA and FDA standards when they come down, we should be getting those here in a month. This also will be produced to make CDB oil, skincare, hair care products. Uh, there's a lot of other stuff, we're also dealing with the NFL and some measures for the pain creams and that type of things as well. Uh, this product will be distributed throughout the world through a contracted agreement with major distribution companies that are already set up doing this. Now, you're not gonna find a whole lot of this in America, 'cause this is new, so we're reaching outside the American borders with companies that already do this, and already distribute this, and already process this. In another factory, we'll have a fiber extraction process. And when you extract that fiber from that plant, it's about as fine as cotton, but it is so strong, it's very tough to break. The hemp plant itself is the most strongest natural fiber grown on earth today, and this is why we're taking advantage of that. In the 3D, in the fiber extraction facility, we plan to extract those fibers from that, from that plant, it will go on to a 3D printing plant. How many's ever heard of 3D printing? Does anybody know what 3D printing is? 3D printing, how many saw the Israelis' 3D printing heart valves on World News here about a month ago? How many saw that? For the human heart, made from hemp. We want to put in these 3D factories and extract these fibers and use these fibers for that, also for the automotive industry, panels like your door panels, your dash panels, things like that. Uh, I believe Ron Davis, Danny, has set up, he's with Automotive Association.
He's the president.
President of Automotive Association is anxiously waiting. If we get this stuff put in place, we'll set up assembly lines, and we'll do it for any company, Toyota, Cadillac, whoever it is, and put a whole bunch of folks to work, 3D printing these parts. And I will tell you that Bevill State down here has a small 3D printing facility already inside the college, so we can train, and we're working with Dr. Enos on training employees on 3D printing. This is gonna be huge. Danny has been to the facility in Knoxville, Tennessee, where they actually 3D printed a car, drove it out of the building. There is a house that's inside that warehouse that was 3D printed from this product. Uh, anything that is made from wood can be 3D printed with this hemp fibers, and that's what we're looking to do. Back into the medical industry, there'll be a point in time where there are, like I said, Israel is already printing 3D heart, 3D heart valves, we'll be able to do prosthetic limbs, I believe on National Geographic, there was a big picture that Danny saw the other day where some company had 3D printed eyeballs for people that had lost their eyesight or lost an eyeball, to be a replacement. Those type of things is what we're working into, and we're working very closely with the medical industry about serving them with this product. Also in our, our model, we have greenhouses. Now, at some point in time, uh, most of the universities, Tuskegee University is already starting to do research on the hemp plant, they're very involved with us, and matter of fact, I'll be going down to Macon County to meet with their commission and the administration there at Tuskegee and at Auburn. And it looks like they have called us in to meet with them next week, so we're planning on going down there and presenting this model, they've already got a part of it. But in the three, in the hydroponic greenhouses, basically, this is a controlled environment. This keeps the plant from being cross-pollinated with whatever else is out there, you've gotta have it in its purest form for medical research, and that's what we're doing with the, with the greenhouses. The hydroponic is the, grown in water. We've searched the, and been to the place over in Calera, it's the largest greenhouse facilities we have in Alabama, and currently, they're growing vegetation for your restaurants from Huntsville to Mobile. It's a huge facility. And inside the warehouse is great big aquariums, and they're using tilapia to fertilize the water. And the tilapia water goes into the greenhouse, and in styrofoam cups, as long and wide as the biggest all the greenhouses are, that water is fed into those tanks, and in styrofoam cups, your vegetation and the roots is growing down in that water. It's the purest form of making it, and it's amazing to see this. We're looking at putting all these greenhouses in every county. Uh, the other thing that our mayors had, had voiced an opinion about and was very positive about the greenhouses was this, how many's watching the World News and see that we're being flooded in the Midwest? Our crops are being flooded. There's red flags going up about food shortages. Even in case we could, this is a safeguard that we could take our greenhouses and grow vegetations and feed our cities and do the best we can with what we have, if it comes necessary to do that. Uh, Ms. Tracy here is from Alabama Power, and we are working with their economic team to try to get solar energy in all of our facilities to lower our costs, our startup cost, our energy, what it costs to run this thing, and, uh, those are the three models that we're looking at. An oil extraction facility, we'll put these in different, the different counties here, we'll put fiber extractions in the different counties, and the greenhouses in the different counties in this tri-county area. Go to the next screen, honey. The Bama Biotech Corporation will joint venture. Now, we've got 152 farmers that are licensed to farm hemp in Alabama, and about 50 have applied for license to process the hemp. Uh, there seems to be a little confusion about how to process, where to get the technology, and since America hadn't been growing this stuff, we're kinda green at that, but we do have, there's a processing facility in Kentucky, just above Nashville, and then there's some over in the Carolinas. And the farmers that are farming it, uh, the state of Tennessee only has 50 licensed to do that, but they go to Kentucky to have it processed. It's not quite as big as a facility as what we're gonna be putting in, and it seems like everybody here is trying to reinvent the wheel and figure out how to do this. Our company is going to JV with companies that are in Australia, Canada, Europe, that have been doing this for decades. They have the oil extraction equipment already perfected, they have the scientific, the technology, the laboratories, the things that we need to do, as well as worldwide distributing around any country. So our team is going to partner in JV with these corporations and bring them into Alabama. Now, what makes it so enticing for these corporations in Alabama is our dollar in Alabama seems to stretch a little further than it does in New York, or as it does in LA and some of these other places. So BB Corporation will recruit and structure a JV with a credible and already successful chemical hemp oil extraction company, and we'll bring that expertise here and reduce our timing and our expense and our startup costs and the operations for the new factories. Uh, Bama Tech, Bama Biotech Corporation will also recruit and structure a JV venture with worldwide commercial hemp oil products distribution companies, that's just what I told you. And this relationship will ensure that our farmers, that there's a demand for this product, and our farmers will be able to grow this, and there'll be a demand for it. The range of commercial hemp oil products is growing rapidly, and the man for it is, is, good quality is also growing as well. Go to the next screen. In this model, this thing will stimulate growth. When you've got a farmer supplying his field to the factory, the factory is processing this material, and then we're taking it one more step and making a product out of this, like I said a while ago. NFL's looking at the pain cream, and, uh, they're already using a lot of the CDB oil products, but we have inroads to the NFL to get them as a contractor. That's just one example. Uh, the governor is gonna be looking at this business model here in about two weeks, and very interested in making this model the state's model. And we're planning on showing this to her, and she can request that we put this model in impoverished counties. Now, Macon County is one of the targets we're headed to next, 'cause it is really needing an economic boost, probably worse than, than we are here. And we can, uh, put it in the other counties that she requests is to boost economic and stimulate growth in those counties. Go to the next screen. We're about done, folks. Is it interesting to you? No? Yeah, I figured it would be. Uh, there'll probably be some investment opportunities when we get down the line, uh, we've got to set up and, with the FCC and, and some of those, to make sure that our regulations are right, so we can open it up for investment opportunities, but I will tell you, there is a long list of people wanting to invest in this type of operation and this company. As of last, even last night, I had a guy that offered a half a million dollars just to get inside the corporation. We're held up, and we're, we're financially backed by Hollins Town Capital, which is a group of the best investment minds in corporate mergers, they do it, uh, around the globe, or break up corporations and sell off the pieces, and we have an investment team that is already behind us. We've been looking at buildings and factories and, and a place for distribution centers in our tri-county area, and we've located many of those buildings, and they're no longer being used, that were used at one time. Uh, many of the cities have previously had industries and employee, employed hundreds of people, have laid dormant, and I don't mind telling you, I'll just tell you point-blank, the past three administrations before this one was bent on taking your industries out of America, but now we've got a President that's bent on bringing it back. And this is part of the economic program, is bringing our farmers and industry together, and we're working with the state agriculture department to make this thing happen. BB Corporation will receive, revive the industries that are in these communities, and the product in the cities and the counties, I believe, will be productive and come back to their former state, and people have money in their pockets to spend, revenue in your towns, in your merchants and things of that nature, jobs and opportunities will be offered that didn't exist before, but they do exist today. Also, I just told you, we were working with the solar systems to try to make our facilities more environmentally friendly too. Go to the next screen.
Sorry, I don't know why I'm still in the seat.
That's all right, we're about at the end anyway. Uh, our company is right for Alabama, and the timing is now. This thing looks like, just in the hemp, commercial hemp section, uh, it's about a $2 billion industry this, this year alone. Now, this thing will quadruple and quadruple and quadruple as time goes along, because everybody is jumping in the bandwagon to try to get involved in this. And, uh, this will, it, it will stimulate economic growth, it'll put our state in line with other states that have already realized this, this opportunities that, that exist in commercial hemp. Our economic business model is the only business model that takes that hemp, the minute it's planted, all the way to a final product and distribute it around the world. Uh, go to the next screen. That may be the last one.
I guess so.
Try it one more time. Either way, we're, we're excited about this model, and, uh, the state departments are excited about this, the governor's chief of staff is excited about this, and the governor wants to talk about this, and this is serious. And we believe that we can really stimulate economic growth. We're looking at Glen Allen right here is putting a distribution center in, and I want to tell you, it's for three reasons. Glen Allen's got a railway, still running through it. It's also, if I'm not mistaken, in one of the opportunity zones. The opportunity zones really make it, um, uh, very attractive for our investors, our investors, any investment team would take advantage of that. What our Alabama opportunity is, is a 10-year tax haven really, for those that are invested in it on capital gains tax. But Glen Allen still has the rail, it's right here close to I-22, and Winfield will get all the retail dollar that comes from that area and from the production of that distribution plant. We can stop rails, the, uh, trains are being shipped all the way, product is being shipped by train all the way to South Carolina and to Kentucky, there's no reason they can't ship it right here to Fayette, Winfield and Lamar County, and us take care of that, uh, extraction process for them and do that. So anyway, I thank you for your time, I appreciate your being involved in this thing, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Crawford's here, if he wants to say something, that'd be great. Danny, you wanna say anything?
Good.
You good? All right, think we've covered all the bases?
I think we have. You might wanna, uh, talk a little bit about the economic impact for the farmers, the price that we get per acre.
Per acre, what they're telling me from the ag department is, it's roughly about $1,500 an acre. Uh, the acreage, you're gonna plant it basically like corn, is what they're telling me, and you're gonna harvest it, and, uh, basically like cutting hay. Preferably, I would prefer it be separated in the field, because I need the flour to go to the oil extraction facilities and seed, and I need the stalks to go to the fiber extraction facility. But we'll set up and separate it at the factories if we need to. Um, it's about a 90-day growth cycle, uh, you'll plant it twice a year in our season, 'cause we have a lot of, you know, warm weather and a little bit longer growth season than some of your northern states. Um, so that's about a $1,500 per acre is what they're averaging on that part. Anything else, Danny?
I think we're good.
Mayor?
Mayor, please.
Sound good? About you, Mayor? Any questions from the council?
Any questions for him? Tell, tell them exactly what you're asking for the, for the city of Winfield to do.
Well, we're very excited, because we have two counties that have already put Economic Travel Fund to meet with the governor and the chief of staff into our industrial funds for this, it's an economic development project, uh, and we, we, we've had two counties to put $1,000 apiece to meet with the governor on this, and if Winfield would like to, or Marion County would like to do that as well, we would certainly receive that. Do that. I feel like a preacher wanna stand up and say, "I didn't stand with you for $100." We're very excited about that. I, I will tell you something funny though, Mayor. When we were presenting this thing to Mayor Nelson, uh, this month ago, we've been working on this for over a year, and, uh, but when we were sitting around the conference table, we were talking about the 3D printing side, and how you could print, uh, tennis shoes and clothing from the, we do have clothing designers that are interested in, in, in setting up and us tooling and, and doing clothing for Fisher's Men Shop, for example, or some of the others. But we were talking to Mayor Nelson, and he, he looked across that conference table, and he said, "You mean I can go over to my printer and I can print off a pair of tennis shoes and wear them out of the building?" And I said, "Well, it's not quite like the printers that we're using today," but you just imagine, let me give you a visualization, basically it's laser heads on the end of robotic arms, that's controlled by a computer, your software, and whatever diagnostics you put in that computer, when that hemp is run through that laser and it's fused together, it'll just sit there and just keep building it and building it and building it and building it until it's in place. You can control the degree of hardness and softness, it is the most amazing thing I've ever seen in my life to do that. So I said, "Yeah, Mayor, we'll get you a small replica of one of those printers, so you can print your own tennis shoes and run up and down these new streets that you've been paving here lately and do that." But it is amazing to see, this is the technology of the future. And my question is, is why can't we have it? Tracy, why can't we have it? Tracy's on board with this. Our representatives are on board, our state senators are on board, it's, the, Greg Reed's on board, Gerald Allen is on board. Everybody sees an economic boom by putting this model in our tri-county area. So why can't we have it? We have the technology, we know where to go get it, we have the college system to train the workers, why can't we have it here? It's time to turn our economic situation around, and I'm one that's gonna do it. I'm gonna work on this and this team, and we're gonna do it. So, thank you for your time tonight.
How many people in the three-county area bought a Washington?
In our three-county area, I'm not sure that there's that many here, I don't know that any in Fayette, you've bought one up here?
No.
One in Marion County.
No producer or anybody else.
Right. I, I knew about that woman, I didn't know if there were any others that had applied or, or come.
I thought Melissa did too.
This is Robert Spiller, he's been working with us on the, with our farmers and our agribusiness stores and, and some of the others.
I talked to the gentleman he's talking about, I talked to him yesterday.
I thought, I started right there.
I talked to him yesterday, and I was begging him to be here tonight.
Well, by this October, we expect a law out of farmers too.
But, uh... If you don't get the farmers on board, all your plant ain't gonna leave up, you never have anything to process.
That's correct. It starts with the farmer.
I mean, that's where it gets down to.
That's where it starts with the farmer.
And if they don't, I mean, you dream the dream, if you ain't got a plan to produce.
That's right.
It's a dream.
That's right. But we'll tell you, we're not the only farmers in the world.
Oh, I know.
We got farmers outside our borders that are dying to bring it in here and have us process it, 'cause they tried to go into Kentucky or tried to get some...
They can't cross state lines, unless you're fast to law and stuff.
That's correct. We're gonna handle that.
From Mississippi, but yeah, Martin Luther, nobody's got to get.
That's right. That's right.
Or they only got pinched yet.
That's right. We're gonna cross that bridge. We've done cross the mountain of bridges already, and there hasn't been no trouble, so we'll get there. Any other questions? All right.
Explain, explain to them what the difference is in hemp and marijuana.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's a big concern for a lot of people.
Very simple. Uh, that was a big concern with the Fayette Baptist Association, and when we got with them and explained what it, what it, what it actually is, they mass-marketed every pastor in the county to support the project. Uh, hemp does not have the THC. The THC, it is what gets you high. Hemp does not have that in it. Um, and to use what we need to do in the CDB oil... And to use what we need to do in the CDB oil is like three percent or content or less.
Three percent.
Yes. That's right, to do that. So, but your marijuana plant is your marijuana, that's your plant that's got the high, they got the THC in it and that's. But, you know, the reason they're looking at that for possibly passing is that in that marijuana plant, there's tremendous amount of benefit of those driving catcher sales nuts. And age research. So that's yet to be seen as something for our president, he's been looking at that. He's also been looking at that to get people off of opioids. It's exactly the opposite of the gateway that everybody's been trying to make you believe. Now, Big Farmer has been a opponent for all of this. Because Big Farmer's not out there to make you businesses, to make you a cure. They're out there to make you a customer. So they've spent a long fight. And all the hoorah and stuff that they've done and used the government to try to try to tell you that this is hallucinating and it can make you do this and make you do that and the other. Scientifically, that's been proven wrong. It's actually got more healing benefits in it than any of that. So now, what basically, Mayor, the egg is out of the chicken and the Big Farmer can't shove it back in there. So they're working with, working with the hemp growers and those states that have already passed the marijuana thing. We can do and process the marijuana, if that's what they want to do, if they pass that, that's no problem. We can do it in a controlled environment as well. But right now, what is legal is hemp. And that's what we're going to do. So it's not the drug. And like I said, the Fed Baptist Association realizes that, understood it and mass marketed their pastors to support this project. And we've not got one kickback from any of them.
If it gets over to three percent, it's destroyed, correct?
Yes, sir.
Who controls the, who checks that?
State of Alabama.
State of Alabama does it.
Oh.
I'm not sure, it's very big process.
At harvest time.
At harvest time, okay.
And if it's over, let's take a match to it.
That's right, destroy it.
That's why a lot of people are opting out of it. Because they don't want to spend, no matter how many bucks in it. And if it's four percent, they just lost.
Right.
Any other questions?
Matthew, you have a question, any question?
Thank you so much for your time, guys. You've been a very receptive audience tonight. Thank you so much, appreciate you, counsel, thank you.
Appreciate coming up and giving the presentation on it.
The next item on the agenda is resolution number twelve forty-two, Val Doc. I A R O four seven, triple D double O seven. This is the grant. We need to pass this resolution. All y'all got a copy of this, we've been applying for this grant. But the industrial access road can be extended up here off of five oh one twenty-nine for the tiffin. I need to ask for motion to prove that it works. All in favor?
They should have taken that resolution out of our step before we did this all.
I gotta go back to Nashville tonight. See y'all. Thank you.
How good, Greg?
Thank you, sir.
The next item on the agenda is Regina's, you may have to hear them take them back a little bit.
Yes, this May, there's the minutes, I forgot to give it to you. And just so you, in case you don't know her, I made you a little bio for her. But Gaye Watkins' term expired this year, May, on the board. And the board accepted her resignation and voted at that same meeting to fill that position with Nene Rodriguez. Those of you that don't know Ms. Nene, she moved to Winfield six years ago from Brooklyn, New York. She's got two, three sons who went to Winfield School, graduated from Winfield School, has a senior this year. First time I met Nene was at the library. She's been a great help to me already. And has showed interest in being on the library board for years. And when we had the position to come open with some other names that she, the board voted unanimously to put Nene in that engine.
So you're asking us, you're asking counsel to put her to be on the board?
Yes.
That's y'all's recommendation too?
Yes, that's the board's recommendation.
Thanks for that recommendation. All in favor?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business.
Starano was here a couple months ago, I guess. There's nothing up there on the hospital. He had mentioned inviting the council to committing up there to kind of get more depth of where the hospital is. And actually, whatever you had on that, you know when that would take place?
Can we do it? Did you advise the council, link together third? They had all the leaders as a group? Talk about development.
I think, I think we can go up there as yes, I mean, it's no different than going to, you know.
Leg meeting?
Leg meeting, whatever, as long as we're not discussing business or transacting business, I don't think it.
You say, has anybody talked to, I don't know about?
No, we, actually, I'm not just at night, but I haven't got that for them for the day.
I can, I can arrange it, I'll make a date for them too. I'll get them, get a date set. You need to kind of give me, I need to kind of give them an idea of the time of the day that you. Because they have a board, they have board meetings, the board of board meetings at twelve once a month. That's on fifteen or sixteen for the month, every month. But we probably need to do a separate meeting for more, very possible. Because I know some of y'all will better make it twelve o'clock. You know, I mean, unless you want to do, set them up and then, you know.
I mean, it doesn't matter, I mean, to me, I mean, I was just filling out what he had told us. I guess we'll just have to make arrangements to meet at his time, you know what I'm saying?
I figure if we can give him a time, you know, tell him we'd like to meet, he can set up a time and just, he'll ask in the morning or evening or midday or wherever, and we can set it up. I'm sure he'd be willing at any time, just long as you, you know, notice we're going to like to do it. If you want me to try to set it up mid-morning, early morning, mid-morning?
I mean, just, I need, I need a venue for him.
All right, I'll get him set us up a time. You got any, anyone, you got an opening? You got an opening?
Yes. Is there some way we can get the street signs all linked straight back up in the way before we?
Me and Main Street been kind of working on that. I don't see Rob in here, but I've been there.
We're going to paint all the other, put up the new signs and everything.
Well, you know, some of these side streets too, that's been up there for several months.
Yeah. I gave Rob a list, we looked at them. Marion and him's got new signs purchased or whatever, done got them, I think, and they're going to give us a Rob. Yeah, we've been working on that kind of, it's kind of funny that you asked and we've got that ahead of you, but we just, Rob's already on top of that. Kemp, Marion and Main Street is looking at doing a sprinkler system. You want to tell us where you want to do that at, Donna?
I'll try to make a. We're trying to beautify the corner down here. And we're having a water problem. The sprinkler system that was put in initially here is busted and no longer functions. And we'd like to replace a portion of it where we can get water to that area over there. We're having to carry the bucket's name.
Yeah.
And that getting pretty old. It's something that we do, Main Street will cover their expense on. So what we'd like to just have the council permission to do the work here. Yeah, we'll tie into the water line out here on two fifty-three and run south. And we plan to run same area that was, when they put the wire in for the traffic lines. So that trenches will be busted up.
There's trenches.
Yeah. Where they cut pavement. And we'll put it in that same trench and then concrete back over it to be just like it is now. So it'll probably be a two or three day period there where we'll have to block the traffic off to the concrete sets up.
Yeah. You know, the council got any?
Is it just the corner? Is that where you're going to do it, just on the corner, or is it the whole?
It'll just be from down two fifty-three to the corner. And Rob suggested that we might want to try, see if we can tie in going back up that way. And we will do that, but I can't promise you that it's practical to do it. The line feeding that old system, it goes under the parking lot. And Rob says it's busted somewhere out under the concrete and just comes up in the cracks of the concrete. So there's nowhere to find it and just go out there and park it not to do it. So we're trying to work with Ramona. Hopefully, we can tie into that old line out there without too much expense. We can pick up a sprinkler system on that bankhead highway.
It's good to go. Wear it out.
Okay.
I've already said something to them, we'll wait to get through that. But I've talked to the concrete guy about fixing his curb out here.
Yeah.
And they really had given a check from the Kemp Foundation to the city to use as we felt like we needed to. And when they do this striping down here for the church, I'd like to go ahead and get them to come do the striping in this parking lot. They should be here any day to do that project at the church. And I think it's all, we're waiting on stripe people, everything else is in.
Yeah. If I can, let me give you update on our parking lot down there. We're pretty well degrade on it and we're trying to let it settle right now because it's not settled with, no way we can go in and pave it. So that it compacted. So we're, county's working with us and having us on that, so we're working on that.
How's that water staying up? Is that water staying off that building better now that we've got that curbs? That water staying out in that, how that building antique mall basement? We still got a water issue down there?
Well, his water issue wasn't really from the parking lot, I think it was more from the restaurant. On the other side of the building, yeah. Yeah, I don't think, we're not going to have a water problem, I don't think. Because I checked it yesterday to just see how the water had been running. Of course, when we get paved, we're going to have a bigger water problem because it's going to come out of that, off there quick.
But you've got a gutter. But you've got a gutter, concrete there, don't you?
No. We're out about twenty-five foot past the building where we offload the water. And we're just cut a ditch and it may, could be paved, a plume, you know, paved later if we wanted to. But I watch that.
Because bringing that up, I think that if Jason had talked about, I believe the property of where the pizza bar is now, that alley in there, actually, the whole alley. That's not an alley, I think that actually belongs to the landowner that owns that building, butts up to the antique mall building. Now, they had talked about paving that. And I believe if they paved that in, the city might need to consider putting a curb in there, a gutter there to take that water to the back of the building or offload it out here onto one eighteen.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, because if that is where the water's coming in, in that basement part of the antique mall. I think it'd be to our advantage to fix it toward the water and give away if they, if they sort it, you know, they've talked about paving that.
Yeah. While we've been doing this construction on the parking lot, I've been in contact with Mike down at his place and keeping him informed what we're doing and keeping him satisfied. If we don't do anything, mess with his business.
Right.
All right, thank you, counsel.
The line?
Yeah, one other thing on the parking lot, we just checking it the other night when we had a show down there. And we're probably going to need a street light or something shine out in the parking lot because it's pretty dark. And we got, to get from parking lot into the field, we've got stairs and it's so dark in that area. So we're probably coming back to y'all asking for a street light. Or spotlight or some kind.
There's already the poles.
Yeah, the poles there, yeah.
Appreciate, appreciate what y'all do, Don. Mary. I've got, old business, we have budgeted for the last two years, we've budgeted a side hog tractor for the street department. And we instructed Rob to keep an eye to see when it has come up through the state or wherever they called and there's been a tractor. There's a tractor that has come up, look at the pictures there, that's come up available. That's under the budget amount that we budgeted for, I think, for that tractor. This is the price on, on things, it might not even. Rob, you remember what we budgeted for that tractor?
I believe it was seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah. That price of that tractor there is seventy-four thousand. State tractor's got twenty-something hundred hours on it, twenty-one or two hundred hours, I think, on it. Which, Rob, he's done, done what we've asked him to do for the last two years, watch and try to catch one to come up. Using a side hog. From my experience, from using an open cab tractor, especially with a side hog, it's kind of a liability. Not a cow. I feel like since ones come up and we've budgeted for the last two years, I feel like I need to ask the council. I've been waiting to see if we can get one. Now that one's come up, I need to ask the council if we can go ahead and let them purchase that tractor. Motion, second, hold in favor. If you will, Rob, make arrangements to go ahead and get the tractor.
Okay.
Let's see. I got any other business? The paving crew should be back, Rob, and then got the tree up at the cemetery. I don't know if you've seen that big tree, there's a big tree blew over on that new part of the cemetery. The cemetery board has asked if the city, if they would, if they pay for half the paving of that street. It's on this, this end of the cemetery. Going in there, if the city would pay for half the paving, they'd pay the other half of the paving. I think we've got an estimate on that. When the paving crew was here, and I don't think it was six or seven thousand dollars total. So the city's pulling to be half that, three to thirty-five hundred dollars. They're supposed to come back and finish and do some more paving for us. And the school, the school's going to help several places prepare. Going into the high school, the different areas around the circle at the high school, coming back out from the high school up here. The two or three places are going to get done. And I need to ask the council if they're okay with us paving, paying for half that street to be paved going into the cemetery on that new addition. It'd be around thirty-five hundred dollars, I think, is what it cost us. They should be back any day to finish that up. I think they're waiting on me to call and tell them that we've got that tree out of the way, ready to do that. None of y'all even come up with any other business? Are they going to pay you more than they're going to? Yeah, Evergreen, we agreed to do Evergreen, they're going to do Evergreen. And. Something like there's one other street that we had. That we had talked about, but I can't, I can't remember. I've got the list of anything, but since you mentioned that, have you got that? Did y'all make them, did you make them a list of the roads? Each one of y'all got that list? If you don't mind, the ones, I checked the roads that we've already done on that list. I'd like for y'all, if you would, to remain as roads on that list. Cause like I said last council meeting, we've got some people that are upset because we are doing paving, uh, which is, you know, not a good thing, people be upset when the city's making capital improvements, but you get people to get upset because the, the improvements hadn't come their way. And, and I've always stated that every street in the city is on, on the list, it's just some take priority over others because of the traffic, and school bus, garbage truck, and different things, and it's down to gravel versus pothole or whatever. But if y'all would, on that list, go do it, and, and give kind of an ideal ranking from one to ten, where you think that road stands, where we, it'd be a joint effort on agreeing which roads we feel like needs to be prioritized over others. I mean, I, I feel like that's the best way to, I feel like that's the way we've been doing it, but by me giving you the list, you can look at it and kind of get an idea of, you know, cause you got people that call you, want the road paved, and you got some that continuously call you, and their roads like, real good shape compared to some of those that don't comply. You know, with, with what we got traffic, but if y'all would, we could get a chance to look at that list and kind of, uh, prioritize which ones you think needs to be done in the next budget year, but we've probably done all we can do this year, but next year when we go to budget. I think, uh, Mr. Regina, Regina here, how, how are we coming, how's stuff coming along at the park for sewer?
That one, Mr. Ian, we've been able to open the old bathrooms back up, and Mr. Ballard is still building up them bathrooms.
So, we're planning to move in, count about right along with that?
Yes, sir. One thing I'd like to mention too, since you're talking about the park tomorrow at ten, Dublin Recreation Park Association District meeting for the northern half of the state will be held at Winfield. And if any, any of you would like to stop by the community center, we'd love to meet those folks and make them feel welcome.
That's at ten.
Ten, sir.
Uh, another note on the, uh, we, you know, we got a C D V G grant for the sewer system up there at, uh, one twenty-nine. All that's complete, they're waiting to cut the pumps on till, till one of the representatives come to verify that everything's in place like it's supposed to be, to where we're going to warranty for pumps, they're supposed to be here at ten Thursday. That way, the Tiffin has already, in the service center and in the call center, they've already got employees working in the call center, and they've got employees, they've started bringing, they, uh, look like, every day that I've been there is three or four a day that's inside that service center. Uh, they, but body's got them locked out right now, where, because it can't use the sewer, cause it's not up and going yet, uh, but they're handling every day, we met the public, uh, they, our guitar's a portuguese, but they're, uh, we're, that's where we're at on finalizing that sewer project. Uh, uh, with the council's approval, I'm gonna reach out for sewer expansion, a sewer expansion grant at the site where we're at. The main plant is because of the possible addition to other buildings being built below the chassis plant and beside the electrical harness plant. I'm gonna try to, you know, see if I can, you know, try to get a, you know, three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollar sewer grant out there, depending if the council's okay with me to. It'd be kind of based the same way, it'd be city applying for it, but it, uh, it'd be based on the size of the system, I think, whether or not it'd be turned over to the water department for the maintaining. But if the council's okay with that, I'm gonna apply for that grant. The, uh, we, which, I thought there would be something on the agenda tonight about it, but I don't, you were supposed to have, I, I thought you were supposed to have another resolution or a public hearing.
Until next time.
Huh?
Next time.
Okay, I'm getting a, a week ahead, uh, two weeks ahead of time then, but I'll go ahead and bring you up to speed on it, it, it's gonna be about this grant that I applied for for quarter states, fixing the drainage issue and paving the roads in the quarter state. That'll come up on the next council meeting, uh, for me to, uh, apply for that grant again. Um, I don't think I've got any other old business, if nobody else has got none, I need to ask for a motion to pave the bills, council pay them. Second. All in favor? Uh, uh, I'm just gonna ask for adjournment, if I will, I'd like to get everybody that's here, the council and the members out, just, when, when I do adjourn, I'd like for everybody to step out front right here to, outside, right here, I've got a announcement that I want to make outside the building out here, and I'd like for everybody here to kind of join us and all the council. If you, if you can, if you got just a second to stand by, uh, that being said, I'd like to ask for motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Uh, Gina has obtained a, uh, flag drop. We're gonna put this in honor of Danny Loftus. For half of Danny. We've got a flag on the front that displays his name. Danny collected all the old flags in town, and he gave them a proper, uh, done, uh, uh, proper disposal of the flags. He, uh, took that ceremony, which I've been there, at the ceremony before, the American Leachville Building here, uh, he always took care of all the flags, gave them what's in a proper disposal, and we're gonna, we're gonna present this in honor of him. I did not first come in, I had. A lot of, David, I kind of left it up to Danny, because he took care of all the flags, issues, he makes sure mine, my place is, he, he kept an eye on, he wanted to take care of getting some, checking it out, uh, he took care of the. Lot of times though, you notice the flag is half mashed right now, a lot of the, the governor gets an order from the president, the president gives the order to the governor, and the governor sends it down to the mayor's. But a lot of times they don't, don't realize why the flag is down, it's, it's an order from Cairo, because of the trash that's happened. Virginia, Virginia right now is seeing the flag down, it's just taken, sunset today. Good, sometimes I don't check my emails, but they're too late, and I always go back, somebody's taking care of it, if I miss it, so, if I miss Danny taking care of my flags, he always takes care of any flag torn or whatever, he can do a ceremony, do a little play. Uh, I feel like, you know, the, um, the flag to me has a different meaning, a lot of special, more meaning to different things, but, uh, it means a lot to me for as military, uh, people that serve this country, to keep our freedom, make it safe for us to be, uh, have a free country that we have, and it, and it, 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 it means a little more to me than Lord, as much as we do. I just, I, I wish that wouldn't Lord, just everybody, but we have, we do what they ask us to do, but, uh, I love the fact that the flag that serves this country, I'm gonna, uh,
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.